All right, welcome everyone. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Welcome to the February edition of our start with our rule call.
Adam Hemken. Tammy Hines. Andrea Corey. Greg Meyer. Scott Mittelcamp. Lisa Schumacher. Tyson Search.
We have a forum. Next time we follow me on the pledge of allegiance.
This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to brave the weather this evening and join us and viewing from home in their nice warm cozy house hopefully. So we're all coming fortunately. The weather was a little scary at first there, but I think it let up just enough to get a meeting in. So fortune for that. Our correspondence is circulating right now. Oops, I'm sorry. I missed one very, very important part. So welcome all the visitors. Thank you again for braving the weather and move on to public comments. I think we have a couple of people that like to call in, so let's go ahead and get those out of the way first. Not out of the way, but we'll give them their priorities. They don't have to wait too long. Again, mind everybody, our comments won't do three minutes please, so get everybody a chance to speak.
Well, this is Tammy.
Hey Tammy, it's Alyssa. I have one speakerphone for the board.
Hi, thank you.
So will have you introduce yourself first and then go ahead and have your time to talk.
Certainly, thank you. My name is Tammy Coltee. I am an art teacher at CMS. And I just wanted to share a few things. It's fairly difficult for me to put it towards what makes a good building level is in Australia from a teacher's perspective. But in my more than thirty years in Columbia Middle School District, I've worked under many principals, the assistant principals. And in my experience, the best of the best put themselves in precarious situations. They take a hard stand for what's right. They will make unpopular decisions. They'll anger some in their efforts to allow teachers to teach in the most productive classrooms. And in our current climate with all of its challenges, I think it's important that we as strong United District provide consistent leadership, building people that are determined to do the right thing. Our building principals play a role in high quality and equitable learning opportunities for our students. For me personally, the arts are an important part of a well-rounded education that I believe every Columbia student deserves. That's why it's so important to have administrators like David Ackerman who understands and supports the teaching of the arts. In the years at CMS, Mr. Ackerman has gone above and beyond to understand the nuances of art education. He's grown, he's listened, he shared his personal experiences with the arts. He's worked hard to understand how students learn and experience art in the classroom. He's offered support in many, many ways. I could cite a bunch of studies about the importance of art classes, music and drama to education, and their positive effects on academic. Mr. Ackerman luckily already know about these studies. But what we both know is that the real value of the arts are that they help students mature emotionally, socially and psychologically. The arts give people a way to process information differently, to present who they are creatively and to form an identity. To this point, our middle school principal, our middle school assistant principal and our principal for that matter are the best. Are respecting personal differences and recognizing that everybody deserves to be included regardless of their socioeconomic status, their gender, their sexual orientation, their family background, their disabilities or their religious faith. Mr. Ackerman recognizes that both students and teachers come to school with varied experiences, philosophies and backgrounds. David Ackerman is respectful, he's inclusive, he is determined to do the right thing. And all the while, he's one of the kindest people that I know. He's interested in helping both teachers and students and he works hard to do so. He's a unique individual. Specifically, I'll state that our schools need a number of unique individuals just like Dave working together to meet the many diverse needs of the families of Columbia. I sincerely hope that this fortification grants David Ackerman the opportunity to continue to work to do the right thing at CMS. I certainly appreciate the time to speak. Thank you.
Thanks Tammy.
Great.
Hello.
Carly.
Yes?
Hey, it's Alyssa.
Hi.
Hi. I have one speakerphone and so we'll have you introduce yourself before you start your time and then you can go ahead and say whatever you like. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
My name is Carly Otwell. I have taught at Columbia Middle School for fifteen years and my oldest daughter is currently in school there. I have a few words to share with you. Kind, compassionate, humble, steady, engaged. These are just a few of the words that can be used to describe current CMS assistant principal and my friend, Mr. David Ackerman. I think it would be quite difficult to maintain all of these qualities as well as Mr. Ackerman has from what has been an eventful tenure in the Columbia School District. He has worked under two different head principals, three different superintendents and three different assistant superintendents. He has worked during a global pandemic and through some of the most challenging times to be an educator or an administrator in any place. Even if these challenges have not been part of his time here so far at Columbia Middle School, Mr. Ackerman has been an exceptional administrator. I have not worked under an administrator who is as engaged, as kind, as patient, as humble and as gracious as Dave Ackerman. Administrator visibility is vitally important and Mr. Ackerman is consistently visible in hallways and classrooms. I have never had an administrator who pulls a student desk to different areas of the hallways to supervise what is happening during classes, calling it a satellite office. This is just one way Mr. Ackerman is visible to students and staff at Columbia Middle School. He is also one of the kindest people I have ever met. He treats everyone at CMS equally whether that person is a teacher, student or support staff member. He is compassionate, compassionate and willing to give anyone a second chance. One of the tenants of his Monday morning announcements is that it is a great day on Monday because this is the start of a new week with new opportunities. He teaches our students to have a growth mindset and to do better than they did the weekday or even minute before now. He supports our struggling students but also holds us to firm and high expectations. He works to make all students at Columbia feel included and part of the community in all aspects. We cannot overstate how important this is to this age group of students especially. Mr. Ackerman is also truly supportive of his staff. He trusts what we are doing in our classrooms and is always willing to listen to the ideas that staff bring. Even if he doesn't always agree, he is willing to listen. He is also gracious with his time. Any type of staff member who's had a question, especially in regards to technology, Mr. Ackerman will come as soon as he can to assist. Some administrators might feel that assistance is below what they are tasked to do, not Mr. Ackerman. And though he is an expert, he has never made us feel any much of them because we might be struggling. He has made videos, offers small group sessions and works one-on-one with teachers often to make sure they understand how to navigate our new tech-heavy educational world. Mr. Ackerman, or just Dave as he is better known among our staff, has been a tremendous blessing to Columbia Middle School and to the Columbia Mid-4 School District. I am happy to be a principal to all our students, but especially to my own daughter Campbell. His leadership is one reason she's had such a positive experience in fifth grade this year. And she speaks highly of him, but I already knew this ahead of time. David Ackerman is both a tremendous administrator and exceptional person. He has helped me to be a better teacher and a better person. He is exactly what we need at CMS. Thank you for your time.
Thanks Carly.
Any more vocals? With that, we'll open up to the in-person. Anybody like to address?
Mark Tullis.
Where should I stand?
Wherever you'd like, sir.
My name is Mark Tullis. I'm currently a fifth grade teacher at Columbia Middle School. I appreciate getting the opportunity to speak tonight, but as is the request in my classroom each day, I urge you to really, really listen. We are professionals. We're in the school environment every day. We know what works and what does not. One thing that does work is, what does not work is lack of discipline. Many of us have been around a while and can tell you, we've watched discipline handled or not handled. Based on social status in the community, the neighborhood a student comes from or athletic ability, et cetera. I was once told that a kid should not be reprimanded because their mother was big into PTA. This mentality never works. Currently, we have a team of administrators and staff at Columbia Middle School who are fair and impartial. Students have the same consequences regardless of who they are, who their parents are. As assistant principal, Mr. Ackerman has had a huge role in helping to change the climate of our school regarding discipline. For him, it's not just about discipline. It's about getting the student to take ownership of their behavior and turn things around. We've watched it happen time and time again. Several students who've struggled with behavior have changed their ways as a result of Mr. Ackerman's guidance. He does his homework, he investigates, he does what's right for the students. Many parents will attest to this. I do think it's a shame that the students and parents who are most familiar with Mr. Ackerman are the ones who have been involved with negative discipline issues. If you were in our school every day, you'd see how hard Mr. Ackerman works on the positive side of things. He's personally invested. He wants students to be excited about coming to school. I mentioned earlier what I think doesn't work and here's something else. In the thirty-two years I've been in this district and community, I've watched hurt feelings, personal opinions and even vendettas damage our schools. I beg you tonight to stop this cycle. We need a district environment in which people are educated, willing to listen, fair, impartial and level-headed. Currently, we have these attributes in our CMS administrative team. However, small-town politics and ideas don't always respond well to truth. Truth and fairness often step on the toes of entitlement, personal feelings. Because we get our feathers ruffled a bit, we end up making decisions that hurt our students. I do remain an optimist. I feel that within each of us is the ability to see what is right and true and I ask you to find that part of yourselves tonight. Because as you may have realized, what is right and true is really what's best for our students. Thanks.
Becky Alexander.
My name is Becky Alexander. I have been a teacher for twenty-five years. Seventeen of those years have been in the Columbia School District and I currently teach fifth grade math and language arts. I'm addressing you tonight to show support for our middle school assistant principal, David Ackerman. In my twenty-five years of teaching, I have had many administrators. Some have been very good, some have not. Some I remember fondly and some for one reason or another did not make a lasting impression. That is not so when I think of David Ackerman. I would put Mr. Ackerman in the top three best administrators I have ever worked for in my teaching career. He encourages students and staff alike. Many days you will hear him on the announcements, reminding us all that whatever mistakes we made yesterday don't matter. Today is a new day, make today great. Mr. Ackerman is also willing to stop whatever he is doing at a moment's notice to help if he can. I quite possibly might have the farthest room from the office, yet many times when I need help or have a question, there he is at my door. He is a regular sight in the hallways and can even be found at his satellite offices located throughout the building at times, working, monitoring and engaging with students and staff. If anyone were to step foot in the middle school for any length of time, they would witness what those of us who work there every day see and know. And that is how well our principal Angela Huels and Mr. Ackerman work together. The positive atmosphere in our building is because of their hard work and dedication to our students and the entire staff. They are an educator's dream team when it comes to principal and assistant principal. Their doors are always open. They are the constant we need when things seem to be changing in education every day. Anyone who is concerned about the social, emotional health and wellbeing of students and teachers would see that Mr. Ackerman cares about everyone in our building and goes above and beyond to make sure we have what we need. I was told not too long ago that I was an admin pleaser. I was worried at first that this was a negative label being placed on me. After some thought, I've come to realize that I want to be an admin pleaser when I have administrators like David Ackerman. He puts in one hundred ten percent day in and day out. He is one of the people that drives our bus, literally and figuratively, and keeps it moving forward. I want to be part of that. If that makes me an admin pleaser, so be it. Mr. Ackerman inspires me to do better and be better through his kindness, empathy and support. Losing him as our assistant principal would have a negative impact on our building culture in a time when we need all the positivity we can get. Thank you and cakaw.
Amber Haven.
My name is Amber Haven and I'm a fifth grade teacher at and future parent of Columbia Middle School. I am speaking tonight in support of Mr. David Ackerman as the middle school assistant principal. In my eleven years of teaching at Columbia Middle School, I have experienced five principal and assistant principal combinations. The CMS teachers and students have fought through changes and inconsistencies in the office for years. However, for the last few years, Mrs. Huels and Mr. Ackerman have worked together and brought stability to our school. With this team, I have felt more supported, more trusted and more encouraged than ever before. This administrative duo is the most effective pair I have ever had the privilege to work with. And because of their support, I feel like I've become a better educator. Together, these two administrators led us through the last two years of figurative fires unburned. Mr. Ackerman and Mrs. Huels brought us together and provided comfort, steadiness and predictability during a time when it seemed everything was changing daily. Mr. Ackerman is understanding of individual student needs. He meets our students with respect and empathy. Upon entering his office, students are greeted with fidgets to make them feel more comfortable, a Rubik's cube or even his famous ukulele. He is honest, he's objective, he's respectful and he's fair. He and the students in his office work through their issues and resolve them together. His communication with and his dedication to the success of each student is admirable. Mr. Ackerman is the assistant principal I want my son to experience when he gets to the middle school. I read a quote recently and although I don't identify with its words at the moment, the message really hit home for me. It stated, "National teacher shortage is a fun way of saying that the USA has made a passion-driven job so inhospitable that even the people who just care about teaching, not the money, don't even care about teaching anymore." I have friends and relatives working in different districts who feel this way. However, I've realized that I do not feel like this because of the culture created in our building by our building admin. I plan to stay in my own little bubble at CMS where I love coming to work because of my coworkers and the students, but most importantly, because of the upbeat learning environment created and fostered by Mr. David Ackerman. I invite you to visit our school, witness our positive climate, the encouragement and the sense of belonging that Mr. Ackerman extends throughout our halls. The thought of losing Mr. Ackerman, one of our biggest cheerleaders and sources of support, who challenges us to be the best teachers we can be and who cares about each and every student simply feels like the straw that will break our collective camel's backs. While the quote I stated above does not feel like my reality right now, losing Mr. Ackerman would impact my love for coming to work every day. The CMS staff would not be the same. A necessary piece of the office would be missing. He's truly irreplaceable. Thank you.
Katie Ref.
Good evening. I'm Katie Ref. I'm here tonight to tell you about the positive influence that David Ackerman has on CMS. I was hired in July twenty twenty. In August twenty twenty, I spent ten days working with Dave Ackerman as he taught me Google Classroom, Skyword, Embrace, PBIS and many other applications and extensions. Dave's IT knowledge is indispensable. He's a vital part of our team. Dave is our representative who works closely with the PBIS reward program. That program aligns with one of Dave's predominant character traits and that's being positive. With our faculty, staff and students, Dave is always looking for ways to reward rather than punish or take away. When I think of Dave Ackerman, the words that come to my mind are caring, helpful, genuine, patient, intelligent and approachable. Dave cares about the students at CMS. Last year, I had the privilege of riding in the small white bus to deliver soaring eagle awards. His enthusiasm made each student feel very special and very appreciated. When a student gets the recognition such as a soaring eagle award, that's a big deal. Well, Dave made certain they felt like it was a big deal. He drove the white bus to the student's house honking and honking the horn over and over, yelling through the megaphone. The students and their parents loved it. At that moment, I was so proud that I was part of this faculty. More recently, last week to be exact, a student of mine came to me with tears in his eyes. I asked him what was wrong and how I could help him. His answer was, "I want to talk to Mr. Ackerman about what happened. He'll handle it." Earlier when I said Dave was approachable, I wasn't just speaking about his faculty and staff. I was speaking about his students. The students at CMS love Dave. Dave will play beat the bell, tribute questions in the morning announcements, find particular coloring pages or something around the hallways at CMS for prizes and so much more. The students at CMS have fun at school. While on lunch duty, I observed Mr. Ackerman having a water bottle flipping contest with the kids. Another time, Dave Ackerman rewarded the students by allowing them to DJ with Miss Klein during their lunch hour. There's nothing like walking down the stairs and hearing a cafeteria full of fifth graders singing John Denver's Take Me Home Country Road. At CMS, our administrators are very visible. They are in the hallways, the classrooms and the cafeteria. They play games with the kids on the playground. They are waiting for their students in the morning and they're there to see them off as they leave for home. If a teacher calls the office with a question or needs help, Dave and Angie are in that classroom in a matter of minutes to assist them. Okay, thank you.
Michelle Spidey.
Stand away from the camera. For those of you that do not know me, I'm Vicky Spidey and I've been teaching in this district for seventeen years. Like others tonight, I'm here to speak about the leadership at CMS. Recently, people have been questioning whether or not Mr. Ackerman would be at CMS next year. Upon hearing these rumors, I was personally saddened but not shocked. I immediately thought, of course, another district or company snatched him up due to his technology expertise, his professional and fair relationship with his colleagues and certainly his positive attitude and enthusiasm. Then selfishly, I thought, not another change in administration. Angie and Dave have been a dynamite duo creating a positive atmosphere that truly has the best interest of our students in mind, all during a global pandemic. We all know people are not knocking at the doors to get into this occupation. A recent business journal posted an article titled, "Teachers Are Quitting and Companies Are Hot to Hire Them." We should be thrilled to have someone with Mr. Ackerman's qualities and experience wanting to work in Columbia School District. As a parent in the community, it is difficult to understand why administrative changes occur even when students, teachers and staff find them to be effective leaders. In my opinion, Mr. Ackerman, two of his greatest attributes are his adaptability and his positivity. His three and a half years in Columbia are unlike any other years that I've taught. Numerous mandated changes frequently occurred and his ability to adapt to these changes demonstrated his resourcefulness and his problem-solving skills. With his technology skills, he was able to lead the district through the remote phase of teaching. He was our expert and go-to person for Google Classroom. He made himself available at all times and led with an extremely positive approach. Dave is very creative and embraces the chance to try new things to improve our school. He was a first to jump on the PBIS awards and has been effective in its implementation. This program focuses on improving behavior and awarding kids that do the right thing. Again, he was readily available with helpful answers to our many questions. He is visible, present and engages with both staff and students, thus creating a sense of community where all feel connected. On top of that, Dave is approachable and willing to listen and consider concerns and questions from his staff and students. He truly cares about CMS. Without a doubt, Mr. Ackerman has been a huge asset to Columbia. He has kept the morale up during a pandemic that seemed impossible to survive. If he leaves, he will be greatly missed and extremely difficult to replace. If the board is truly voting tonight on whether or not to renew his contract, my sincere hope is that all of you will take into consideration what you are hearing tonight from the people that work beside him daily. Please vote to do what is in the best interest of our staff and students. Do not allow us to lose yet another dedicated, strong leader. Thank you.
Callie Zaborca.
Hi, good evening. My name is Callie Zaborca. This is my twenty-first year of teaching and it's my eighteenth year of teaching seventh grade math at Columbia Middle School. In all those years, I've never felt compelled to speak at a board meeting. But just as I would stand up for any student that was treated unfairly or with a lack of respect, I will stand up for an administrator just the same. We are a family at CMS. I'm thankful to have had the opportunity to work with many excellent administrators during my years. However, I can wholeheartedly say that the team of Mrs. Huels and Mr. Ackerman is by far the best example of true teamwork, creative problem-solving, effective communication and an incredible dedication to the needs of their staff and students. Our CMS webpage states, "Our mission is to serve the needs of our young people by encouraging educational excellence in an environment which promotes the development of productive and responsible citizens." Mr. Ackerman is instrumental in creating that environment for both teachers and students. Together with Mrs. Huels, this administrative team supports teachers in providing quality instruction, a positive work environment and a safe place for student interactions. They both hold students to high expectations while treating all students with dignity and respect. Mr. Ackerman started a positive behavioral interventions and support program known as PBIS at CMS four years ago. This program has been successful in reducing behavioral problems and increasing positive relationships between students and staff. Because of the proven strategies of this program, it is now a district-wide initiative that was adopted by all three schools. I've been fortunate to work with Mr. Ackerman in that initiative, both at the middle school and the district levels and can say that he truly cares about making school a fun, safe and productive environment for every student. It is no secret that the past several years in education have been, by all standards, challenging. However, the challenges both students and teachers have faced at CMS have been possible to overcome due to the support of our incredible administrator team. I believe, as I'm sure that all of you do too, that in the field of education that we should all continually strive to do better for our students. The disruption to this administrative team is not better for anyone. This unnecessary and unjustified change will most certainly have a negative impact on both the teachers and the students in our building. It must be reconsidered. Thank you.
Heidi Klein?
My name is Heidi Klein. I have been teaching middle school at Columbia for 31 years. I am a strong supporter of Mr. Ackerman, our assistant principal. I am here because I believe in him, I support him, and I'm for him. They have spoken of his attributes, and they have shared all that he has done, and I would like to share a list of what Mr. Ackerman does not do. He does not give up on students. He does not lose sight of the truth that he is in education to help students become the best version of themselves. He does not forget to remind our entire school that we have a new start, a fresh start, every day. He does not worry about or seek out credit or glory. He does not judge. He does not speak evil of others. He does not back away from tough situations. He does not jump to conclusions. He does not avoid hard conversations. He does not problem-solve for our school without involving teachers, counselors, and social workers. He does not have his own agenda, and he does not have an ego. And Mr. Ackerman is the assistant principal that we need at CMS. He listens, he reflects, he brainstorms, he problem-solves, he stays positive, and every day he rolls up his sleeves and he works hard. We want Mr. Ackerman at the middle school again next year, and we are scratching our heads, wondering why he may not be our assistant principal next year. We see who he is, and what he is, and what he does at the middle school, and we are for him. Will you be for him too? Thank you.
Rosemary Langeng?
Hello, I'm Rosemary Langeng. I'm the guidance counselor at Columbia Middle School. I've been in Columbia Middle School for 17 years. I've been in the school district for 25 years. I'm also a graduate of the district. When Dave Ackerman came to Columbia Middle School three and a half years ago, I was encouraged by his approach in intervening with middle school students. As he met and spoke to students, whether it was to discuss tardies or to praise a student, I was invited to be a part of some of these conversations, as the role of a counselor. However, what I learned, quickly learned as I took part in these conversations, was that, in all honesty, they didn't need me. He was the counselor in these meetings with the students. He was playing both roles. Dave develops rapport and relationships with the kids quickly. He performs amazing magic tricks. He tells jokes that surprisingly do make the kids laugh, and his fidget spinner contests, he has fidget spinner contests with them. I've also been a part of many tough conversations where Dave has had to unfortunately give consequences to students for their poor choices. But you see, Dave's approach on consequences is pretty unique. He at times negotiates with the students on what the consequence may look like, and the student and Mr. Ackerman come to an agreement, let's say two lunch detentions, for example. There are also so many times that a student has had such a long conversation with Mr. Ackerman because of their actions, the student leaves with only the consequence of having that long conversation with him. We've had a pretty good winter weather season, but unfortunately, we've been stuck inside for lunch recess on some of our cold and snow days. What do you do with 150 kids for 15 minutes to keep them happy and making good decisions? Dave has been creative in creating indoor recess games, entertainment that involve all students, 150 of them at each lunch. We have four lunches, four lunches which involve bottle flip contests, heads and tails, four corners, karaoke, rock, paper, scissors. Columbia Board of Education, I welcome you to join us during our lunches and see how entertained and well-behaved our middle school students are because of the guidance of Mr. Ackerman and Mrs. Hules. I welcome you to come and visit our hallways during casting periods where you will see Mr. Ackerman and Mrs. Hules connecting with students and constantly building a positive climate for our students. If you haven't already, I welcome you to discuss the climate of Columbia Middle School with our staff members. I know that you will hear that throughout all of our stress and strife of COVID these past two years, that we at Columbia Middle School were doing okay. And not just okay, we're really okay. We couldn't have done this COVID Google thing without Dave. There's no way. I welcome you to join our Columbia Middle School team, to be on our side, to support our administrators and staff in all that we do to support our students, because I feel that truly successful teams starts at the top. The top in our building is solid. Now we need the top in our district to join us and not divide us, and together I feel that we can make a super fabulous, magnificent, cock-a-doodle team.
Sarah Klein?
Hi, my name is Sarah Klein. This is my second year as the school social worker at CMS and CHS. I am here to speak in support of our assistant principal, Dave Ackerman. When I first started at Columbia, I wasn't sure what to expect. Anyone who works or has worked at the middle school recently can imagine how pleasantly surprised I was when I walked in my first day. The positivity teamwork and overall support I felt were overwhelming. One of the first people I met that day was Dave. I was very nervous, I didn't know anyone. In my first conversation we had, he told me a personal lighthearted story about himself, and I immediately felt more comfortable. If you know Dave on any kind of personal level, you understand what I mean. He has a way of making everyone feel welcome and at ease, and this is not a quality that is easy to come by. The current administration at Columbia Middle School hasn't completely figured out. Dave and Angie have a perfect blend of professionalism while still being approachable and personable. They work exceptionally well together and make the staff at CMS feel supported, appreciated, and heard. I know that if I had anything going on professionally or personally, I could go to either one of them, and they would make the time to listen and do whatever they could do to help. Dave is a vital asset to our CMS team. He is at lunch duty, as you've heard, almost every single day, getting to know students and making them laugh. When we're stuck inside, he's the first to come up with a game or activity to ensure that students have a fun break while they're stuck inside. He was the driving force in getting PBIS going in our district, produces a school-wide positive reinforcement incentive system to look at school discipline from a different perspective. When an issue comes up with a student who I personally work with, he will ask for my feedback to better understand how the student's social emotional needs may affect their behaviors. He is always listening, he's always willing to listen to everyone's input and ideas, and he genuinely does his best to put those ideas into practice. Dave is not just a vital part of the administration, but a vital reason as to why I and so many others here tonight enjoy working at CMS. During arguably the most difficult time to work in education, Dave makes the job fun and enjoyable. He has done his best to make students and staff feel a sense of normalcy during an unprecedented time. His work ethic is superior. He is constantly doing more than was asked of him, and he goes above and beyond to ensure students have a productive learning environment and that teachers feel supported. In his interactions with students, he always shows them respect and kindness, even when having to deal with a discipline issue. He teaches students instead of shaming them for making mistakes. Hopefully this evening you all will understand the necessity of keeping the current administration. It is very hard to imagine anyone being able to replicate our current climate at CMS. In a time when social emotional health is at its utmost importance, the social emotional impact of all decisions must be considered. I'm also reading the following statement on behalf of the staff member who was unable to make it tonight. "I have had significant interaction with Dave when it comes to the support of our students at Columbia Middle School. The decisions are always with forethought, integrity, and looking out for our students so they truly understand the importance of an education. His dedication to our school is evident by the amount of hours he works, his professionalism, and concern he has for our students. To lose this truly amazing man would definitely make tremendous blow to the Columbia School District. I strongly encourage the Board of Education to continue to employ this dedicated educational and professional." Thank you.
Michelle Haven, were you interested in doing public comments?
No, I think you offered what I was going to say. Very good.
That's everyone.
Thank you all for taking the time and sharing your stories. We definitely appreciate it. Did I know before we were finally still around, or is that correct? Did they consent? Great, you have to walk us through that.
Yeah, we've had some changes. Caitlin Holiday, high school English teacher, has added to the resignation, so we've got six individuals there that are resigning. Employee educational support personnel. We added Linda Christie, bus driver. But Neil Knapp, maintenance, which has worked two days, he is no longer being hired, so we can take him off. Laney Randall, CMS career professional, is going to be added to the leave of absences. And then because of Caitlin Holiday, we've added a vacancy of high school English teacher. Given all of those changes, administration, like the message you approved, this has presented.
Presented and amended. All right, any questions, discussions, comments? Without entertaining a motion to accept the agenda, consent agenda as amended, present.
Make the motion.
For a second?
I'll second.
Second. Carefully, real call, please.
Adam Hempen?
Hi.
Tammy Hines?
Yes.
Andrea Corey?
Yes.
Greg Meyer?
Yes.
Scott Middlecamp?
Hi.
Lisa Schumacher?
Yes.
And Tyson Surge?
Yes.
For that item. See, seven is our communication report presentation. Start with our enrollment reports.
Got it in there. Our numbers, questions on that?
Questions on enrollment? Move on to our administrative reports.
We have with us today, Mr. Blackley. He is our brand new assistant principal at the high school, so welcome.
I don't know if you sit, stand, uh, the presentation.
He can sit.
They also seem to sit.
This happened, I better have anyone to sit. I didn't, I was at the very first board meeting. Obviously, there are other items that are being discussed back in the middle school gym, but I didn't ever have a chance to properly introduce myself. Mr. Grody, thank you for introducing me. I'm Jeremy Blackley, new assistant principal at the high school. It's been a fantastic welcoming by the community, the school, the staff, students, more than I could have imagined. I have been at Chester the last 14 years, I still reside there, so I give a lot of time to pod, listen to podcasts and become more intelligent, at least I think so. So, and as I told my tutorial son that, when we talk about what I was doing way back to in front of work, but it was a risk, but well worth it. I've enjoyed every bit so far. I have a wife that's a re-individuenist in education, about the same amount of time I've been in, and then also two boys, a junior and a seventh grader. Keep me pretty busy. I'll, my report, kind of, I'll just make it as short as possible. There's a few things I'm involved in. Startup, if you attended this past Sunday, we have a group of Columbia students that are very active in the model of startup organization entrepreneurs. They were extremely hard. I'm impressed, every time I get a listen, just I get to sit on a board meetings, and then they give their presentations on planning, execution, and problems they may. It's neat. That's a core group of individuals that are hitting a home run. I wasn't able to attend this past Sunday, but I did, they had the meeting today that kind of went through issues they faced and the successes of it. Wanted to mention that. It's a fantastic program, I think, for the high school. It's not a massive number of students, but we will have nine, I believe, in the next year, so hats off to them as they finish out the rest of the year. Some of the teachers that talked in the middle school tonight hit on this often in their speeches, and thank you for talking tonight, I appreciate it. But, Mr. Grody, one of my first objectives when I got hired, I think I attended one, two PBIS training days, and it wasn't necessarily on the radar. I always read a little bit about it, didn't know much what it entailed, but the, one of the goals that we made at the high school, as was mentioned, it's going to be a district-wide program, but I was kind of slated to take the lead on that, and it was a great opportunity. Mr. Reeves put me in that position, and it was a chance to kind of grow a little bit and clear a work as a team, collaborate, and build off what has already been established, obviously, in the district. Three to four years, we're trying to get going at the high school. So, after the trainings, a lot of things we were hearing, at least our team was, a lot of, well, it takes longer at the high school level. It's different at the high school level, it's not the same as you can make it elementary or younger, so we have, we have definitely, I think, been given quite the task, and so far, what we have produced, I feel pretty confident, as we are taking a step in the right direction. So I brought some, this was a unique idea, now I cannot claim credit for, actually, my secretary, Dana, I went to her, I wanted, we wanted, like, try to some way, time limited, implement a small piece of what PBS I will, PBIS will look like at the high school, and we came up with, the only thing that we could turn around quick, but also have a pretty big impact, so I brought a little packet for everybody, and it's been, I guess, in action for the last two months now, but I have seven, so if you could take one and pass it, however, they couldn't share with the partner maybe. But they are, they are currency, are little vouchers, I guess you'd call it, but there is, a lot goes into it. A big thing in the high school, especially during lunch, we have a cafe, ran by Miss Dares' class, which is the special education coordinator, and that actually funds the things they do outside of school, the profit they make, and kids love, oh, sugary, high carbs, who doesn't? Snacks, it's a very, very popular stand. So somehow, I wanted to incorporate that into a way we could make it a positive reward, or reward positive behavior, and yes, it is something that is, I guess, an extrinsic reward, and that isn't the main scope of it, but this was just a little case, but we wanted to bring the whole school in it, so a lot of, a lot of students come in to the office, usually it's not necessarily for good reasons, necessarily for positive reasons, but they don't even know our office secretaries or our office staff. So we made, these are what the, what the money looks like, the voucher you can spend at that cafe, and if you notice, slowly, we're relating the whole line of who was in our staff. Miss Klein's was actually, Sarah's was created today, because I went to the day, I went to the day and said, hey, make a board presentation, we need to expand our money. She designed it, Dave designed it, and produces it, and I sat down one night and I spaded every kind of currency name I could think of, and Sarah's actually, oh, Klein currency. And we used our, we asked for the bit emojis, the students love it. It says who it is, and it actually becomes more of a collective item as well. They do turn it into the stand, get three items, it's a full circle revenue to that stand. The students that did the right thing, teachers are involved, they go on to Skyword, trying to really incorporate Skyword into it, they type up a positive for whatever they have done, and that's all passed to you next. This is an example of Hudson Bryant, made by Miss Arnold. It'll be right on the back of this one, this is like what I call their trophy, tell them to take it home, show mom, dad, tell them they'll use steak dinner, or a new cell phone, you did something that, you did something good or positive, because that's the point of, I think, the PBIS, at least how I understand it. But they get to keep this, it would replicate the same, obviously, the same, but then, hey, they need to write on there, we put on the back there, and we present it to them, take their picture, tailor puts it on social media, it's been a very, I mean, extremely responsive, I think, on social media, all the comments, family members comment on the, some of the posts, and it's a, it's a full circle, full circle kind of item. It's a small piece of what we're going to do, but this is a little bit of our kickoff, our start, and right now, we're nearing 30, 30-plus positive referrals. We had a group of students during the snowstorm last week that wanted to stay anonymous, but they went out geared up and took on the conditions, and they were literally scraping all the employees' windows, front, back, sides, and a couple of teachers called them. I saw them too, out the window, I tried to run them all, did vandalize the vehicles, but they took pictures, they sent it in on what we could do, and the first step was they recommended that into this PBIS, small, small ticket item, but it, to me, I think it kind of bridges the whole concept of trying to be the high school, and we spend so much, and I heart on this a lot, on admin means, we spend so much time focusing on, you know, some students that don't make the best decisions, choices, and a lot of our effort and time is consumed there. This is my favorite time, whenever I get a knock on the door of a classroom and pull one of them out, some are very bashful, and they won't be necessarily in front of the class, if they did the right thing, but I'll read out what the teacher said about what they did, and acknowledge that, and pass it on. I, this is my favorite time, whenever I get a knock on the door of a classroom and pull one of them out, some are very bashful and they won't be necessarily in front of the class if they did the right thing, but I'll read out what the teacher said about what they did and acknowledge that and pass it on. So they can throw free, 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 uh, bags at lunch, corporate, but that's one, one small initiative we started, it's, it's, it's really went very well so far, I'm waiting for my money to be developed, hopefully soon. Blackly Bucks, I think, is what they're calling that one, but pretty true, they, they treat them like trading cards. We had an issue with trading cards, student IDs, students started to use them as trading cards and we wanted to not do that, because that, that was not okay. But this one, they're trying to collect the series and eventually we'll have the whole high school office in there, maybe expand departments too, because my mind keeps scrolling of ideas that, I'm sure Dave is shaking your head right now and saying, no. But, very small one that will be on top of what the bigger plan is and I don't have a long speech on that one, that was my focus, uh, that hopefully we get at the level that the middle school is, because it is a, I think, a fantastic way to build a, uh, a culture that has to exist inside every school. Full tomorrow, positive, not those negative things. We are, we, we met today for the second time, uh, as a group, PBIS team, ours at the high school, and we are, we are here, our focus on a pretty intensive freshman academy, we're trying to draw a, um, an outline on what that would look like, two day, week or two before school starts. We want to invite a sophomore class that didn't get one because of COVID and kinda, uh, retrain or relearn, uh, behaviors that were, winning all kinds of money. But it will, it, it, it's, it's developing as a, a pretty neat, pretty neat, uh, theory, we hope to have structured out and be able to present to the board in a month or two and get approval to start to publicize the freshman academy where we can kind of teach them the norms of how high school runs, behaviors, schedule, things like that, but that's in the works and then also.
If I could interrupt you real quick, uh, we heard a lot of the comments about PBIS and you've mentioned it several times in your links for us that don't know what PBIS is and people at home, can you just explain the program real quick, so? There's a lot of acronyms around and some people.
Yeah, yeah, you, you're right, and I apologize, and I do draw acronyms, I think, policy and education, we get a, a book, a dictionary of what the acronym stand for and that's how we communicate sometimes and, and people that aren't in it, definitely. So it's a policy of behavior intervention system structure, um, and it's basically based in, in the, in data is what will eventually direct how you're, how you're creating ways to, uh, correct negative behaviors, but at the same time, start to really promote positive behavior systems. You, you structure a positive behavior system inside your school. One big thing is they make a, a lot of, uh, levels and I think the middle school has one, looked at it, maybe you've used it, there's a common language matrix, you start changing the, you take the negative language out of a lot of, of, of different parts of discipline, even things, you stick on both side classroom and you, you change the language into a positive, more of a positive language, uh, type deal. That's developed and then as either quarters, semesters or years go by, you study your data on if our party's improving, maybe a focus on parties, uh, disrespect, uh, lunchroom behavior. Are those referrals starting to go down because of positive behavior systems you have created as a team, as a school, adapted and then implemented? You wanna see that data and, and it should start to release, positive behaviors start to raise and negative behaviors start to go down. That's the, that's the concept, it's been around for a while, I guess, I never thought that I would be in it, uh, when I made the move here, then, then Mr. Grody said, we're doing PBIS, let's go, whole district. Can wait, but after learning more about it, it is pretty exciting, I think, our, our PBIS team, we're pretty excited what, what, what it'll lead to, but that's the main thing, the positive behavior intervention system, um, that, that's what the acronym stands for. It's, it's pretty intense, can be complicated, but we are, we are going to, uh, maybe take this little piece of the pie and eventually, uh, take on the whole thing. Our, our, our goal was, I feel, this is really the high school, we were, we were hoping two years full implementation, uh, and use the middle school as an example. We also stole, uh, from Bob Dugan, uh, Dugie, the, uh, principal of Parkview, he does something with like houses, I guess, or lunch, or like competition to curb any behaviors. That's the third phase of ours, it's, we're starting to create, we have a student ID issue where students don't always have to wear them or forgive them, they're not valuable enough for them. So, hopefully get homerooms back next year and then our third phase is that we create competitions among homerooms, they get to name their homeroom and they can compete one quarter and it'll be freshman or sophomore homerooms or, or whatever it may be, but we're gonna add QR code to our student IDs. If you're caught doing, you know, if you're caught doing the right thing or something positive for another person, a staff member, or you're out picking up trash in the parking lot, a teacher will have a scanner, they can scan a QR code, it'll, it'll automatically go into a, a data system, so those people, we're gonna publicize that data and have like a, a graph, so like. All those working together, we're hoping that, that's the direction of our PBIS, initially, that one's a little further out in development, but that's the goal. This was the, our, our little baby and we're taking it along hopefully to toddler slash middle school soon. It'll tie, it'll all tie in together eventually, if this is the one. That's our, that's our PBIS, what we think it should look like, fingers crossed, we can, uh, we can get the whole school to buy in and, and, uh, be like, middle school ain't a little bit, fingers crossed, that's all I got, sorry, it took so long.
Sure it's all.
Should raise your hand over there. I'm a, I think it's all. Anybody else wanna ask a question? I will talk more, I'll answer, honestly.
So for CEA, um, I don't, I obviously work at the high school, you did Parkview's CEA report. Um, so my name is Karla Wontek, I teach second grade at Parkview, um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the teacher donations for the PTA trivia night. So PTA trivia night was a huge success, they raised over, they raised more money than what their goal was, thirty-five?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven thousand dollars, I think their goal was thirty-five, somewhere in there, yeah. Um, so they made, it was a huge success. Um, a lot depended because the teachers donated opportunities that were sold. So, uh, there were lunch and breakfast opportunities with the teacher, uh, you can be teacher for the day, uh, movie night with your teacher and teacher assistant for the whole quarter. Um, some teachers made homemade items that sold like really well, so all of these donations, the PTA just started counting their dollars. Um, so they really did well, um, PTA then in turns offer, in turn offers a teacher's things like grants, uh, treats for Teacher Appreciation Day, which is May third, I want to put it on your calendar. Um, dinner during period teacher conferences, uh, not to mention other times of the year where they just kinda stocked the lounge with soda or snacks or, or things like that. Um, the teachers love and appreciate the PTA and we enjoy in, um, doing things with them, so, and, um, the Parkview team lost by two points. That's all I got.
Go to our assistant superintendent report.
Yeah, um, so I'm gonna start with something old and then move on to something new. Um, so just kinda wanna give you an update with, um, our process for looking through the power standards. Um, you know, it's, teachers, we worked through it, have talked a lot about it, um, we're getting to the point now where teachers are getting, nearing the point of completion for parts of their thing. I'm sort of been getting a lot of groups requesting me to come and meet with them and kind of fine tune it and what they're doing. Um, it has led to some amazing conversations that, um, number one, give me the benefit of actually having time to sit down with the teachers and hear what is going on in their classroom, it's one thing to stop by rooms, or have a quick conversation in the hall, but to actually have some time to sit down and really talk with them, um, is great. Um, it's also been really nice for some teachers to start thinking about things in a little bit different way, um, and kind of promote that collective groupness around their entire grade level and really bringing groups back together and starting to see some of that joy. And we heard a lot about how this has been a crazy time in education, um, but we go into education because that's our passion and that's what we want to do, is teach. And so to be able to have these conversations about curriculum and learning and to see the excitement in teachers' eyes is so exciting and a welcome to break from talking about masks and COVID and quarantines. Um, so I'm excited as we keep going through with that process, um, our math curriculum review team, we met a couple weeks ago and have narrowed down our search, we're looking at four different curriculums, so we've started getting in some materials. Today I was actually able to deliver the first set of materials that came in, um, with a rubric that we kind of identified what are our kind of important areas as a district, um, but then also what is just good quality teaching material rating results, so the teachers have that material on their hands to start doing those rubrics. Um, again, we're still on track right now, knock on wood, um, to be able to narrow it down and kind of come up with a decision, um, to be able to present to you in May for your consideration and for what we'll do for next year, which will then allow us to start professional development at the end of the year and over the summer, so that we're ready to hit the ground running next school year. Um, next month, I'm speaking of curriculum though, next month I'm gonna be bringing to you a new curriculum proposal for a course at the middle school. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about it tonight though, so that as you're looking through the proposal, um, you kind of have a little background. So it is a financial literacy course, um, that will be taught at the sixth grade level is where we're intending to implement it first. Financial literacy is a requirement by the state that we teach, they define it as a unit, but that's the extent of how the state board defines a unit, so we're looking at doing this for a semester course. Um, and this course will incorporate a lot of math skills, but also challenge our students to think critically about the actual real world that they'll start living in. So in this sixth grade course, they will start learning about, um, how the stock market works, a little bit about that, they'll learn how to create a budget, they'll understand interest rates, um, percentages, um, online bank safety, you know, a lot of times banking is moving to that. I still, where you scan your, take a picture of your check and it's automatically deposited into your bank, still blows my mind a little bit. Um, but we know that digital safety, just in a whole, is extremely important for our students, so this class will actually talk about financial and online banking safety of the course. Um, and then the students will just do a lot of hands-on activities, real-world planning, um, but it also has some gamification into it, so it will be a very engaging course, um, for all of our sixth graders to go through with that class. So I'm excited for you to take a look at that curriculum, and like I said, we'll have it for next month's board meeting for your approval. Um, and then the most exciting news, I think, that, um, Mr. Grody was graciously enough to let me share with everyone is, um, so every year the state of Illinois selects ten teachers across the state, one representing each region. Um, and then those ten teachers are into consideration for the Illinois Teacher of the Year, um, and we are extremely blessed that, um, Katie Jack, our middle school special ed teacher, was selected as Southwest Region, uh, Teacher of the Year. So she, if you go to the state website, her picture is on there along with the other nine, um, winners, but I think that, um, speaks a lot about, um, obviously Katie and what she does in our, our school, but also, um, thanks to her hard work, brings a lot of recognition to a lot of other teachers in this district that really do a lot. But she is representing, um, herself in our district extremely well.
This is Smith, is being nice, when she says that, it's gracious and allowed her to say it, um, we, we discussed what we're all gonna cover, kind of before we get here and, um, we didn't flip a coin. But it became quite clear that Ms. Smith should be able to be able to say it because she goes first, she's the curriculum person and she had a lot of really good arguments. I do wanna just say, it, it, it's quite an honor to have a teacher like Katie Jack in our, in our district and she is really just a representative of a lot of the good work that I see going on in all of the classrooms and all of the buildings, so it's, um, the southwest region is as well there. So, um, that is the best news that we have. The biggest news or the largest change that has happened is that we're now masks optional, I wanna talk about that a little bit, um, I know that we tried to start this year that way, but we're finally there, things happen slowly, it's gonna be my theme here, things sometimes happen slowly. This change comes with mixed emotions, both sides are passionate about their opinions and, um, it's just, it's time to get back to normal, normal being kind of what we did two years ago, before the whole COVID trek. I wish this track back to normal would be quick and easy, but normal is gonna need unification, is gonna need some healing, because not only did we do a lot of different things, it changed education in many ways. We did it with a lot of deep and heavy and strong feelings, our teachers over the last two years, they've been called a lot to do things that honestly, I don't think any of us imagined would ever be things that we had to worry about. And the teachers, whether or not they thought it is needed or unneeded, because we've got both sides of that camp, they complied, the school was changed, these changed affected families and then the families and the schools, it's this symbiotic relationship that, you know, everybody was trying to deal with differences. Again, some found these changes necessary and others found them just outright ridiculous, and I've talked to both sides and listened to both sides share that, but the tasks of trying to stay masked, keeping others masked, trying to teach while masked. You know, I, I know when I'm at the cashier and the person is talking to me and they've got their mask on, I have no idea what they're saying. I, I'm old, I have older ears, but that's just part of the problem, the, the keeping track of movement of students, because if your principal comes to you and says, you know, this person's sick, I need to know who is close to them, you've gotta keep track of that. Some classrooms, it's easier than others, you know, the elementaries where they move around and they work in groups, it's, it's, it's laborious. These are extra duties, it's not what we typically did and it wasn't easy, but we did them with some people thanking us and other people's telling us it was just absolutely ridiculous, it was unnecessary, but yet we did them. Now, the roles are somewhat reversed and there is somewhat of a sense of, woo-hoo, we won, and this whole we won didn't win. Our kids have gotten a great education over the last two years from a lot of hard work and dedication from a lot of people, so we all won, it's just a matter of these feelings that come with these changes as they go this way and that way, that we're all gonna have to process through and, and get unified over, and that's gonna take time. Um, I just wanna say that, you know, we acknowledge that and we're gonna get there. And we're well on our way, watching people over the last, it's been a week or two weeks since we've been, three weeks, seriously? Yeah, time is just different and it moves differently, and so I just, I wanted to point out that we are now masks optional and, um, I'm relieved and I'm mostly relieved because it feels like more and more water is getting underneath that bridge and I just can't wait for us to be back to normal, completely unified and, and ready to do the great education that we do. Because we got people like Katie Jack and next year, who knows which one of our teachers is gonna be named, but I'm, I'm betting we've got a list of people that could be nominated, so, um. As I talk about bearing opinions, I wanna talk a little bit about snow days, today, semi-good example, no superintendent likes it when a storm comes in the midday. Last week we had a, uh, you know, we, we watched the radar, we listened to the reports, today it was, it was good that we knew that we'd be able to make it through the day, whether or not this meeting was gonna happen tonight, you know, I'm glad that we canceled the basketball game, because I don't want kids driving in a bus through this. Adult, we do need to have a business meeting every month to get payroll processed, bills paid, there is a business to it, um. The decisions are hard and, and I'll be the first one to say, I make right ones and I make wrong ones and I just try and do the best I can. Last week, many people, um, thought an early release was warranted, but looking at the radars and the reports, the storm was clearing, I knew that the storm wouldn't be there around three, that we'd have time for the salt to get on the roads and everything and, um. We knew the second wave was coming in later, which is why we moved everything, we were thinking that our board meeting would get moved to a nicer night, however, that didn't have it, you just can't move a board meeting twice, um. Anyway, we stayed open and dismissal went really good, but I will be honest with you, about sixty percent of our kids were gone, you know, because they got picked up, which is fine, we're allowed to get them picked up, um, I do wanna say that we learned something. I don't know the solution to this yet, but I did learn that if fifty people, fifty people call the school at the same time, our system crashes, we can handle forty-nine. But the fiftieth caller, it drops the service and for a while we actually had to unplug our phones from external calls because people were then walking in and saying, I want my child, and the phones are how we. people were then walking in and saying, I want my child, and the phones are how we reach the, the classrooms as well. And so we needed our system to run internally to be able to get the kids to go, and that's why they were down for a little bit, we kept rebooting it, and it was just, it was interesting. Calling for an early dismissal vote is logistically hard. Bus drivers have to get called back, they gotta do a DOT before they can get on the bus and drive it, so they're gonna have to come back at least a half an hour early before they can get off the bus and get there. So the bus drivers have to get there, give them an hour to get the buses to then go out. Parents have to be notified, we've got a lot of kids that can't get off the bus if the parents aren't home, and so you put the kid on the bus, you drive them around, the parents aren't there, they stay on the bus. It's, it's, it's not the best situation, we don't like to, um, say early, and as I've talked to various people that have questioned me on that decision-making abilities, you know, I said, tomorrow's lunch can come, can become tonight's dinner. And you know, like today, if the storm would have continued at three o'clock, I would much rather not put the kids on the bus than try and put them on the bus and get them through a storm. I can keep them at five, six o'clock, we can do tomorrow's lunch for dinner, it's the kid's safety is the number one option, and there's a lot of options that we can do, but we do watch the, um, radar and we do, uh, try to make those best decisions, um. We are looking into how to fix the fifty-call problem. We are also going to talk about, um, early releases to see if administratively and logistically there is an easier, softer way, sometimes it might be necessary. I would also say that we're probably gonna start talking about late starts. There are many days where in the morning, maybe if we can go an hour or two, and I'm just throwing that out there now, so.
We used to do that.
Did we used to do that? It's, it's something that might, you know, be necessary and more information's forthcoming, um. But that's really kind of what I wanna say about snow days is I wish I had a crystal ball that could always be perfect. I do put the kids' needs and, and safety first, um. And anybody that's got issues with any of my decisions, you can call and I'd be happy to talk to you about it. I'm a much, I, I much prefer being talked to and explaining both sides, because I might learn something rather than just post on social media. I will say that unification over the masks, over the snow days, over per near everything, social media is not necessarily our friend in this, and thank you YouTube and Facebook for allowing the people to watch this from home. Everything's got good and bad, uh, that is life. Last and not least, the city's doing a strategic comprehensive plan, which is pretty exciting to talk about it, you know, where are they gonna grow, what do they need to do? A lot of good stuff from that. They are asking for a volunteer from every board in the city. This being one of the boards in the city, I need a volunteer, I know that there are a few of you that are willing to do it. Four meetings between March and September, that's really all I know, they say the meetings will last at least two hours. And they say that there's two to three hours of prep time, I don't know if that's reaching out and talking to constituents in your area, if it's yeah, I don't know what that prep time would be. However, um, they are saying it's two to three hours of prep time and two hours for four meetings. I'm going to turn that over to, I think, you, Mr. Meyer, to decide who is going to be the person that I hold up to the city.
Okay.
You're welcome.
I think we'd like to volunteer.
I'll volunteer.
We also want the job.
What, you wanna fight me for it?
I'm scared of her, so I'm like.
No, because I don't know what time, like I recommended that I would do, but I don't know what time the meetings are, you know, like
That's true, I asked you, I couldn't give you my name.
Yeah, they might do it in the middle of the day, and we didn't receive our letters in the mail. That, I thought that letter was supposed to come in the mail, that you attached to the email.
Uh, no, I think it was just coming to us, I think it's coming to the director of all the boards, so.
Yeah, Andrew, you can have it.
Everybody good with Andrew?
Absolutely.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm gonna give all of the contact information to, um, yeah. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. All right, on to our items for action versus the approval of our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school calendar.
Um, I will share with you that this is the same as the, uh, I think the fifteen sixteen calendar, or is it the sixteen seventeen calendar? Somebody finally, the, the dates line up except for Easter, Easter was the one thing that, that, that got moved, but this is very much like the previous calendar, and so we kinda had a framework to go from. Um, we talked about it administratively, we talked about it with the association, this is pretty much the recommendation. Um, we are making one larger, I think, change, and, and Ms. Smith can talk a little bit about that, but we're gonna try and change the PLC stuff.
Sure, um, so we are, uh, making a recommendation to move away from the Wednesday early dismissal PLCs, um, and move to a once-a-month hack day. Um, there's a, several different reasons behind it, um. Part of it is when the PLC movement came around several years ago, that's, you know, what districts needed at the time. The purpose of those PLCs have kind of evolved and we're further on that, a lot of it stemmed around the new standards when they first came out and giving teachers the time to look through them and break them down and unpack them and then start looking at how that's implemented in the classroom. So we're, we're kind of involved from that. Um, another advantage to going to the half-days is that it would put us all on the same schedule as far as PD. So currently, if, um, we have something that I need to get to the buildings, it takes me an entire month, um, for, for me to be able to get to every building. Because by the time, um, the Eagleview teachers are able to get to a PLC meeting, it's only about fifteen, twenty minutes before the high school teachers are dismissed. So it doesn't leave us a lot of collaborative, collective time to get together. Um, so that would be a huge step forward for us as far as having common professional development time. Um, but in talking with the teachers, there was some concern about, you know, they do utilize that Wednesday time to touch base with their teams, because unfortunately, our current schedule doesn't allow for teams to have a common planning time during the day. Um, and so in keeping that into consideration, that is part of the plan into the, all of those half-days, that teams will always have time to get together to touch base and, um, keep that a focus and a priority, because that is just as important as the professional development side to it. So if you notice on the calendar, um, with a few exceptions, we've tried to keep those half-days the last Friday of the month. So that way it's not constantly moving and parents have to remember, oh, it's October, so this one's on a Wednesday, and oh, it's November, this is, you know, whatever it is. So we, we tried to make those, um, the last Friday that we are in session at school of the month, um, and so that's, that's what all the, the extra purple boxes on the suggested calendar are for, but like I said, it would allow us to have full days a majority of the week, wouldn't change up schedules and, um, class times and all of that each week.
And so with that said, if there's any questions, comments, but, uh, everything else pretty much follows what we normally do, you know, spring break around Easter, Christmas break, it's, um, I think there, so, uh, the administration would recommend that you approve the twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar as presented.
Any discussion? Do you like to make a motion to accept the school calendar as presented? Make that motion to it once.
Fix that in a second.
All right. Two burdens to a burden, so a motion and a second. This doesn't involve money, so everybody in favor? Right? Any opposed? Any objections? All right, the next one is
Date and time of graduation.
Date and time for graduation, thank you.
We, uh, originally proposed Saturday, May fourteenth at eleven AM and Sunday, May fifteenth at eleven AM. However, talking to Mr. Reeves most recently, we'd like to change that to Saturday, the days will be the same, so it'll be Saturday, May fourteenth and Sunday, May fifteenth, but we'd like to move it to one PM. The reason for that is, is that when you get into graduation, you look at some of the athletic events, and you've got seniors in a lot of different places. The girls soccer should not be an issue, because we'd be able to play that on Friday. What is an issue is that there's been a bas- a baseball tournament that has happened previously, the last two years it's been canceled, but it's with Waterloo and with, um, us and, uh, I forget the third. What's that? That might be Ballmer, um, anyway, but they play that day, and so if we move it to one PM that day, the seniors would be able to play in the first game, and then the second game, they'd, they'd be able to come to the graduation. So we're, we're asking for May fourteenth and fifteenth at one PM, um, because it doesn't seem like that tournament's gonna happen this year, so. With that minor, um, amendment or change, uh, the administration would recommend that we graduate them on May fourteenth, with the fifteenth being the rain day. So it would be on Saturday, and if it rains on Saturday, it'd be on Sunday.
Or regular.
Um, like last year, there's a lot of It wasn't like that last year, it wasn't.
Wasn't discussed with the baseball coach? Though I mean, like the seniors, that might be a big thing for the seniors to miss, but.
I don't know.
I mean, graduation's important, but also
Yeah, and, and every weekend around that time, you're gonna look at the state track finals, you're gonna look at, I, I mean, there's a lot of other events going on, so. That seemed to be the least. And I just, I don't know, I talked to, I talked to Brian and I didn't ask if he was talking to the coach, so. Are we all fine with the fourteenth and the fifteenth, though? The, the key thing is that I wanna make sure I know the dates, because I want the families to be able, if they've got family coming into town, to know when they get their hotel rooms, and then we can, we can finalize the time later, next month even.
Little do we know about the baseball tournament, I guess that's gonna be.
I will tell you, I just got a message from Mr. Reeves that it was discussed with the baseball coach, it was.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Thank goodness for social media.
Yeah. So yeah, let's discuss with the baseball coach. Does that make you feel better about the one o'clock, or?
I'm just, you know.
Is it possible to approve the date without, and leaving the time fluid?
Yeah, as long as it, I, in my mind, right now, we don't need to know the time, but you do need for families to be able to get hotel rooms and to come in and to make their plans or vacations. The date is, is crucial. So, May fourteenth, Saturday, is our initial date, with Sunday, May fifteenth being the rain day. Is that good?
Maybe a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Perfect. The fourteenth and fifteenth are news. Our last item for action is the approval of the tax abatement resolution.
Yes, this is a yearly resolution that we do, we basically take five hundred thousand dollars from the county facility sales tax, and we put it towards bond and interest payments to abate the taxes so that, um, the county doesn't have to, to pass that on to the, the taxpayers. Um, this has been something that we've done every year that I've been here, because they did it the year prior to that, I don't even know when this county facility sales tax was passed in this county. However, I do know that often it comes with the agreement that we will abate the taxes, and so, um, it did. Yeah, so my recommendation is that we once again uphold that agreement and, um, abate five hundred thousand dollars from the county facility sales taxes about bond and interest payments. And that would be a local.
Maybe you'd like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Scott? All right, vocal please.
Tammy Hines?
Yes.
Andrea Corey?
Yes.
Greg Meyer?
Yes.
Scott Littlecamp?
Aye.
Lisa Schumacher?
Yes.
Tyson Surge?
Yes.
Adam Humpkin?
Aye.
Very happy to reduce taxes. All right, on to next item is our discussion items, we'll start with our facilities study.
Hi, uh, as you guys know, we've been talking to other architects and looking at various things. Um, they went out and they started to do a needs assessment, which is a deeper dive into the educate. Uh, health, life, safety, ex- uh, review is when the architect comes in and they look at your health, life, safety issues, like, does your elevator work? Do you have your emergency lights? Where are you on your asbestos, um, abatement plan and whatnot? This is a deeper dive, looking at the classrooms, looking at the electrical outlets, you know, with today's technology, would this be a suitable school? I mean, we're looking at the high school, because we've talked about that being probably the, the school that needs the most.
Yes.
All right, do, do they have any?
I don't.
They don't. What I've got in front of you, and I wanna stress, this is an idea, this is a plan, this is not set in stone, but the architect while out there said, there's plenty of room to build ice.
But a lot of them is.
And so, um, of course, I didn't say, you're absolutely wrong, you must be crazy, I don't understand, I said, roof! And so we talked about it, this is what's called a bubble graph or a bubble diagram. And the red parts would be roughly where they were built on. The second gym option is over in the middle of the parking lot, I don't like that option.
I don't get that.
That takes up a lot of parking and I just, I, I'm not thrilled with that option. And talking to Curtis Steed, when he was walking into the techs, he was actually envisioning that second option to the gym to actually be cut into the hill behind the press box. So that the parking would be restored and you wouldn't lose any over here. I personally like the idea of the second gym being attached over by the gym, because you'd be sharing locker rooms, and it just seems to me to make more sense. Um, there's a big block over at the end by the garage and the, um, greenhouse, that would be an auditorium. And then there is another wing, so basically there'd be a wing out front with, um, connectors from the front wing to the back wing. Um, this would allow a lot of opportunities, like, right now, on the, I'm gonna say the right-hand side, the wing that's closest to the football field, the multipurpose field, there's an elevator. The wing that's closest to Highway Three, there's no elevator. So if a kid is in a wheelchair and needs to go to the second floor of that wing, they get in the classroom. If we build another wings, I would propose that you build an elevator in the new wing on the side that's not a wing, so that they could go up and down and then cross the little vestibule thing. This plan's got a lot of potential. Looking at it, for me, I think the key is that we're gonna need the Department of Transportation to, to, to look at. Right now, Route Three and Veterans Highway, we know what that traffic jam looks like in the morning. You'll see a little like dotted area that's connecting our parking lot with Route Three. And what we've discussed in this solution would be, think of three, of, of Route Three, there being three lanes from the middle school to that one. So you could turn right out of there, you stay in that lane, or you could turn in, you stay in that lane, and then you'd have a right turn into the parking lot off of Route Three. And coming out of Route, uh, out of the parking lot, you'd be able to do a right turn onto Route Three in that third lane and then merge over, it, it, it's got about the same distance as you've got when you when you gotta cut over for the JB Bridge if you're down by, what road is that, sir? The, the, what's that? Cory Palmer Road, when you get off of Cory Palmer Road and get on Route Three, you gotta get over your Jamesy Bridge, and if you can't get over, you're gonna take sixty-four across to St. Louis. I can't be the only one that's not being stuck in that position. So a third lane there would be kinda like that. I think that would help the transportation, um. The new gym, I would want a new gym with a second floor with an indoor track, so that we can do regional tournaments, we can do sectional tournaments with the seating. And an indoor track would help our, our PP, but it'd be something that a school our size should have, um. The band and the choir, I'd probably move over into the new lane close to the auditorium. A band and a choir should have quick access to the auditorium for productions and things of that nature. The auditorium being at this side makes it a lot, and, and the bathroom then being over here makes it easier for them to get onto the multipurpose field. Um, for, for games and whatnot, um. The, um, you know, the district office, where the office is right now, what would it become? Because there'd be an office out front that would, um, be where they get buzzed in and everything like that, you know, so the whole flow of the school would need to be thought about, but you also would open up all of the offices that are now Mr. Blackley's office and Mrs. Ryan's office. What that could be used for OTPT, some related services, like, I mean, it opens up quite a bit. Um, I've met somebody that said, ooh, if we could actually move all of our district offices to the short link without the elevator, opening up Park View for op- opportunities here. This plan is, because it's a renovation, is probably the most economical plan. It's just whether or not the traffic would be able to support it, the park, the number of parking, Mr. Reeves, um, brought to me was what about parking? And, you know, there's a lot of districts. There's a lot of districts out there that until you can get more parking, the sophomores don't drive, it's just juniors and seniors. You know, we've gotta count the, the places and see what we want and why we want it and how that would work, um. I think I've studied this a few times, but. This is an idea. It's not what we are doing. It's what we might be doing. But I don't want anybody leaving here saying, well, Mr. Rhodes got it all figured out. This is an interesting idea and I bring it to you because. I'm most excited about that idea of the third lane between the middle school and um. Veterans as far as the traffic at the high school, and I say that as. The superintendent who's always concerned about student safety, but also as the dad who drops his kid off every morning. So, um. Questions about this, concerns about this, thoughts that I haven't brought up?
So I just wanna reiterate, this is, like you said, it's not a proposal. This is just part of the process that we've taken upon as kind of a year-long goal or however long it takes of. Exploring our long-term, are we postured for ten years from now, right?
Yes.
So I think for those who maybe have not been part of the previous meetings, but. You know, just kinda throwing that out there that, you know, this is something we're wanting to look at options, look at what our growth plan or. Look in where the city's going, you know, what the population of the town. To make sure we don't get caught off guard with not having the right facilities for our future.
Yes, absolutely.
How many classrooms you think that would have?
If, if you, if you mimic what is currently there, um, and I didn't bring the map of the high school, but I know like in that short wing. There's ten classrooms, five on the bottom, five on the top. Um, on the longer wing, there's. Double it, do you happen to know, why not, but basically you'd double in your classroom space. You know, and and could you do this in phases, you know, as you, as you think about what do we need and where do we need it? I know that like Pinkyville High School, when they, when they did their addition onto their high school. They built just one floor. But they built it with the roof being able to handle the second floor. So they put roofing material over the concrete substrate, knowing that there's a second floor that could possibly come out. So we could do this with just one floor over here. Saddens me that the elevator wouldn't assist on that other side. Um, but I mean, there's, there's. You know, because we might not right now need all those classrooms. You know, but that's what you would do is you build it in two phases. So there's um. Nor would you even have to, I mean. Build the wing entirely, like this could be a shrivel, maybe just classrooms on one side, it could be. You know, when we get into the design phase and really what we need, there's gonna be a lot more discussions, um. One of the key pieces, if we are locked in with. The high school being the place that needs renovation, needs change. Um. We need to then start having a committee and that's because the next phase that the architects work through is they talk about. Programmatic, and so what you do is you get a representative from each department. At the high school to come and represent their department. And the architects kinda talk about to them, what do you need, why, why do you need it, where, you know, what. What. Things are, would be nice, and so, um. We are getting to the point where we need to decide if the high school is exactly what we wanna work on, but um. Right now, this is just another idea approach from trying to build another school.
I think it's an interesting idea and the cost savings will be substantial. It's huge, which would be physically responsible to our taxpayers, so I think they appreciate it still. It's interesting. And the location that we have is great.
Can we get traffic on, on highway three, what?
Who takes on that challenge? Who takes on that challenge, Rick?
I've been working with our civil engineers, right now, they, they did talk to, the civil engineers are looking at it to see. Are there any variances or. Codes that superintendents don't know about that civil engineers would know about as to whether or not a third lane there would be uh, invasive. But I wanted to share this with you guys because often you'll ask me questions that I haven't thought about. And that's a good thing, because then I, 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 I will find the answers.
Would there be stakes for parking behind the garage?
Um, honestly, if the, our auditorium's gonna be there, the garage would probably have to get moved.
And then the, is that, I can't remember if that land is square.
Straight diagonal, yeah, that's why it's kinda, the idea for a auditorium to go back there, it's kinda neat because you don't need windows.
Oh, okay.
The earth's gonna be a natural uh, insulator.
You're talking about the auditorium being tucked into the, into the.
Right, right, so, almost like an earth dome type deal where the front with the exposed rest of it, same song. Changing the walls and.
What I like, uh, one of the things I also like about this is that regardless of the auditorium being where it's put on this paper or. Um, tucked into the grass by the second gym option. Either way, events that are being put on has that bad parking. People would be going straight into the auditorium for auditorium events and not walking through our classroom space. Or if they go to an athletic event, they can park back there and go directly into the, it'd be an entrance way for the gyms. And so you'd be going into the gyms and not walking through, right now when you walk into the school, you, you know. You've got that little bar, it doesn't like put on the, the classrooms, but it, it really kinda separates and demarcates the after-school stuff versus the in-school stuff, so.
It's a good for schools like Eagleview, you know, they're getting rid of that, so we wouldn't be moving. You know, kids into the old building here to.
Well, that's where if we moved, if, if, if the district, if we did this. Or whatever, the district office moved out of park view, first grade to move over here. And that would then, um. Give Eagleview the, the, the room that it needs. Could be just much more.
So what's your next step?
My next step is to find out from the architects if highway three and this bridge over in there is even possible. Um, my concern would be in the long line run, if we're, if we're looking at doubling. Or coming close to doubling our size. Doing it at this site without figuring out how to address the highway three, I think is a safety issue, and so the next step would be to figure that out. Um, at that point, then what would we do is we would. If that becomes feasible, then we do. Move forward with possibly engaging the architects and trying to come up with plans for this.
Just kinda include the public in as well, we were, as Adam alluded to earlier, we're trying to be proactive and anticipate the scene of the community instead of just getting wrongsided and having a problem, we need to fix management, event emergency. So we had to look at options of building an entire high school. So, we found the site, we had the architects come and take a look at it, they gave it the sign. Said it was just cost prohibitive, so we kinda threw that one out the window, so. The idea we originally had was to build an entire high school. And then when architects did the walkthrough, they said, hey, we might be able to do something with our existing structure as you see here. So, again, the, the advantage of we don't have to redo the multipurpose field. We have a lot of other infrastructure in place. So it just makes a lot of sense economically. If we're going to meet the needs in the future, so.
Then we would continue to find the increase we have in St. Clair County and that we'd still be supporting our, our FFA program, which is a, a nice thing. Talking to Ms. Wonton, she didn't realize that we actually find that land and get revenue from that, so, um. It's our FFA fund.
FFA is a greatest program in the central program.
Alright, so think about this, questions, concerns, comments, anything or ideas that you have? Please, please let me know, alright?
Any other questions or comments? Here then, we'll move on to our individual board member comments, anybody have anything you'd like to drop?
I'd like to, um, I wanted to make a recommendation, um, moving forward, um, that the people that we are hiring. On the consent agenda, attend the board meeting that night as the meeting boots have gotten away from us.
Yeah.
And it's nice to put a name to face because this is the first time that.
You read Mr. Blackley?
Yes, saw him at a basketball game, but at a distance, you know, so.
We discussed that already and totally on the, on the, on the, on the document.
So if we're approving if we're hired, then we probably could think that they are at the school board meeting that evening and then.
Agreed, it's a great idea. Anything else? Probably if I really have nothing this evening, we're gonna be, I'm going to lay this here, somebody won't hear me talk anymore. We do have an executive session for this evening and uh, probably we'll have some action items resulting from our executive session. So if anybody wants to stick around, we'll be happy to let you know when we finish. Uh, with that, I would entertain maybe motion. Could you make a motion to the adjourn or make an adjournment? Your motion to adjourn, right? Um, it is important, compensation. I'm getting out of practice.
I, I have all the executive session now.
Set one for the committee, set the straight. Uh, we need an inter-executive session with purpose of appointment, deployment, compensation, discipline, performance. And we dismiss all the specific employees of the public body and legal counsel for the public body. Including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine his. We're sending a motion?
Yes.
Alright, you got it?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
You did roll call, roll call.
You did roll call, right?
I don't know why.
I trust you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Andrea Corey?
Yes.
Craig Meyer?
Yes.
Scott Middlecamp?
Aye.
Lisa Schumacher?
Yes.
Tyson Searge?
Yes.
Adam Humken?
Aye.
Tammy Hines?
Yes.